Thank you. So I have proposed an amendment. The amendment is before you that really basically reverses a couple of elements that we had taken out of the original motion relative to the land development task force. And so I'm not going to read the whole motion, but it's actually restoring the one project manager to be recruited from within the corporation for a position of up to three years, but notwithstanding that funded from the planning department, temporary funding to be fully funded from the revenues that they generate in future years. So I'll propose that amendment, seconded by Counselor Jackson. And if I could speak to that.
The amendment's on the floor. It's seconded by Counselor Jackson. Yes, you may speak to it.
Thank you very much. And so this is an issue that was predominantly driven by our staff and in discussion with our city manager, Chris Murray, and myself. We were very keen, very interested in getting value out of our existing properties out there. There's some 6,000 properties, all of them in different states of either use or non-use, that potentially proposes to provide additional value. So let me just ask through you, to our city manager, this clearly is something that you've wanted to do for quite some time, and we finally got to a point where we're able to develop a structure that we could agree on. And as you know, and this is a long question, as you know, my preferred option down the road had been a land development corporation separate apart, but I agree that this is a good step to take. But it needs to have a person that's directing this. So do you, I mean, first of all, could you tell us the rationale in terms of why you pursued this in the first place? And then, secondly, how difficult is it going to be to actually try and do it off the corner of someone's desk without actually having someone in the lead and in charge on this project?
If I can through you, Chairman. Thank you very much, Mayor Eisenberger. You know, as you know, generally speaking, we think long and hard about any time we propose resources in this manner, and we always start first by, you know, asking ourselves the question, is this position needed? And is there a way in which we can do it without further adding to the burden that our taxpayers pay? There's no question, in our mind, a task force like this, which is going to look at 2,000 properties and establish, you know, if you will, highest, best use for those properties, you know, need someone who wakes up every day, and this is their job, that they are accountable for delivering results, and it's not something that is shared amongst a number of different people. So I think a couple of things that need to be addressed here is that we've got over 2,000 properties that we own. We have a market right now in Hamilton that is performing quite well. And so I do feel there's a sense of urgency in terms of looking at those properties and looking at them from the standpoint of, you know, what's the most that we can do with them. And there's a range of things that we can do with our properties, and we can certainly sell them if it makes sense, and we can certainly develop them. I mean, if you look at the City Hall property, we've heard everything from possibly hotels to an office complex, you know, to contemplate what we might do with this property here, you know, we'll take some considered thought, and we'll take the involvement of a number of different departments within the organization. You know, we have other properties. I know Counselor Johnson and I have talked about Shadoak, and talked about the idea of, is there something we could do better with the, you know, the rather dated facility that is on that property? So these things aren't just strictly real estate transactions. There's some planning that goes into them. I know we have social housing challenges that maybe some of our properties can address. I know we've got slivers of property that, quite frankly, you know, we hang on to, and they present a risk in some respects, but these are properties that we could move into, whether they be community gardens, or we could sell them off to adjacent neighbors. There's a whole host of things. So there's some complexity to this work. And so, you know, without belaboring it too much, you know, what we hope we could do is use our resources the best we can, make sure someone wakes up every day that is focused on this work, that can work with the number of departments that may have to be involved in order to bring some of these properties to, you know, the right conclusion. And that, going forward, we would, you know, from the proceeds of this work, would pay for the position going down the road. So and then I'll just end with the simple statement that I think, you know, we have a marketplace here in Hamilton we haven't seen in a generation. I want to take full advantage of it. I think doing this off the corner of the desk is certainly anything's possible, but, you know, if we want to act, you know, in some kind of expeditious manner, I think, you know, having someone accountable every day to tackle this work on your behalf, I think, is important. So that's why we recommended it, and that's why I think, you know, I appreciate the mayor wanting to consider it in this manner.
Thank you very much. And so I'm not going to belabor it. I think it's an important issue for us to evolve. Just one last question in terms of the funding. So you're talking about temporary funding to get this up and running. I mean, it's going to take some time to find those kind of revenue opportunities. So when can we expect you to come back and say, now it's going to be self-funded? And that's the intent?
Sure.
This is going to be self-funding, and if it isn't self-funding, you're going to come back to us and tell us that, and we're likely going to not proceed.
Yeah, I mean, and we like that pressure, to be quite honest, and I think our self-funding is 2017 and forward. So, I mean, we're looking to use some existing funding that's within our 2016 budget. And then, you know, and we will be back in front of you this year with our work plan. And then, you know, we fully expect to, you know, be able to start to generate some revenue. Again, as you can see in Appendix B, the organizational chart for this, John Hurtel, who's going to continue to look after RevGen, is also going to be the one that's going to be helping me on this. You know, John, I think, has more than demonstrated his ability to make money in very, you know, appropriate creative ways, and he looks at the 2,000 properties as an opportunity. So, yeah, I mean, you know, it will have to perform. And I think, generally speaking, you know, we rise to those occasions, and I expect this person will do a good job to perform.
Great. Thank you very much. So I encourage members of council to support this. This is a wise, you know, short-term investment in a longer-term play that's going to provide, I think, benefits, not only in terms of repurposing lands that are underutilized, but generating revenue off of lands that are possibly sitting idle, not getting highest and best value from. And that's a mission that we should all have, and to try and do it off the corner of someone's desk, you know, on a random kind of basis, is not, I think, the best approach to take. It's got to be someone's focus, and on the short term, we need to provide a little bit of funding, not new money, but existing money that can be diverted to here, that will ultimately get them to a revenue-generating position that will be then self-funding from there on in, not unlike what we did with the energy reduction team that operates in exactly the same way, and has been very effective for the past six, seven, or eight years. So I encourage you to support this. I think it's important for us to do. The timing is now. This is the right market conditions to actually generate value out of these properties, and to have someone focused on doing that, I think, is the right step to take. So I thank you for your consideration.
Counselor Brenda Johnson?
Yep, thank you. And as I said at GICI, I liked the idea, but I did have some questions about the process. And I heard our city manager say that there's an urgent matter, and I believe I specifically asked that question, is there an urgency to this? And the answer was no. So I'm really confused at this point, and I also wondered why it wasn't referred to the budget process. So my questions are, if we're taking a recruit from the corporation as a contract position, whoever gets chosen for that position, does their position, former position, become vacant, or are we going to have to find money to fill that position?
So I guess, to answer you, Chair, to your first point about urgency, I mean, the market is the market. I mean, and I believe things are happening in the market that we haven't seen before. You know, I mean, when we think about urgency, I mean, there's emergencies which generate urgency, and then there's just getting on with the work. So if we said, no, there's no urgency, then I'm happy to explain what we mean by that. So I think there is a great opportunity that we need to seize. That's the first thing. In terms of who we end up selecting within the organization, you know, there will not be any of that kind of, you know, oh, and by the way, here's the surprise, we need more money to fill this position. The intent of the report, and will be the reality of the report, is that the money that we're going to operate with is within what's been approved already. The reason why it's not an enhancement, looking for more money, is because I don't want us to have to go ask the taxpayers for more money. I want to make use of the assets that we already have, and use some of that to pay for this position moving forward, assuming that they're producing the kind of results that they have to produce, which, of course, I think, if they wake up every day, and it will be their job, they'll be incented to generate positive things. So I don't expect, and again, I can't forecast exactly how this is going to play out in terms of, you know, who we're going to get into that position quickly. But, you know, I can assure you, I don't, there will not be a, oh, and by the way, because of this, I need to come back and ask you for more money. That's not how we intend this. That's not how this will work. So hopefully, that answers your questions.
And thank you. And through you, Chair, to Mr. Part C says that 2017 it'll all be fully funded. I understand that.
Yep.
Again, will that come to the budget process, even though this part did not? Will that come to the budget process to say this is, when will we find out exactly? So before the budget process starts, and we see an increase in planning and act of, because they need to fill this position, I don't want to see it shoved under, you know, Appendix C and between C and T. I want to see it upfront, that this has been funded fully by the revenues, and here's what the picture looks like.
So through you, Chairman, what I will do, if, you know, we get the green light to proceed, I will ensure that John provides an update to this council as to who's been selected, and what the financial impact is. And not just this year, but moving forward, so that you know that there is no ask coming as a result of this decision in the 2017 budget, 18 budget, or beyond. I get it loud and clear as to how we know, as just in general, this table understands very clearly that when we come to you asking for more money, you know, especially when it comes to hiring more staff, you know, that is typically a mountain too high. And we better have one heck of a solid business case to kind of be asking for more FTEs. And the general direction has been, over the last half dozen years, if you look at the tax increases, which have been almost the lowest in the province, is that we make do with what we got. And so, you know, the clear, crisp answer to your question is that, as a result of this, there will not be enhancements or FTEs being asked for in the 2017 or 18 budget. We will make do with the resources or the assets that we have to pay for this thing moving forward.
Okay, thank you. And through you to Mr. Murray. And my other comment, because I don't have my notes with me right now, I wasn't aware this motion was coming forward, but I remember distinctly asking, is there not existing employees right now that are currently handling special projects? It's unclear to me what special projects means, but my understanding is that they're the ones that pick up all the loose strings that people throw at them when something comes up, and they're more reactive than proactive. Is there not already in the staff complement of those that are handling special projects that can take this on?
That's a great question. I mean, one of the first things that I did after our GIC meeting was, because I was listening to the questions, I think there was, there was this implication that maybe there's someone within real estate that would fit the bill. And so I did talk with Ray. The nature of what real estate does is very transactional, and I asked Ray in terms of the backlog of work he has to do, and the kinds of people that he might have available, that who could just fill this role. And, you know, I think his answer to me was that they are, just with the complement they have, they have a backlog of work they got to cut through. There's no one there that would have the, all the skills that we, except for a guy like Ray or Darlene Cole, who I don't think you want me to, you know, to use in this role, to be quite honest, because they are incredibly busy. And not only that, I think Ray's job as director, you know, isn't to fill this role. Other people in the organization, sure, I mean, we relocate them from their role to this role. You know, we look at the work that now has to stop going, because I was looking at John's team, you know, is there someone within John's team that might be able to just, you know, just, we get rid of what their job description is right now, and we replace it with this. Well, then, you know, certainly that will affect his revenue generation success that he's had. So, I mean, we've looked at this. Like I say, if there was an easy fix, I would never have put it in, I would never put Items B and C into this recommendation if there was an easy transfer. I think in the very early going of this, I had hoped that that would be the case. I remember talking to some members of council about four, five, six months ago about the idea of a task force, and why I thought it made good sense. My hope was, in the early days, that there would be someone that would be able to fit the bill, as you've said. But I know John has done his homework, and has talked to the people, that would make some sense, and there's just not the easy answer that we had hoped, and hence the reason why the proposal is what it is.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Thorne, I can remember the last budget process that we went through for 2016. Planning and active asked for and received a pretty significant increase in the budget, and I'm hearing now that this position can come out of your budget. So my question to you is, have we gone through the rest of the budget to see where else we can do some cost savings? This is money that we, and I'm assuming that this position is not going to be chump change. It's going to be as significant if you want somebody in that high-profile position. So in your budget, and we've got the money to fund it through your budget, do you have any comments?
Yes, through the chair. So the funding source we would use out of our existing budget for this position is the transactional costs that real estate recoups from transactions. We do have some room in those revenues to temporarily cover this position, and then the anticipation would be that in 2017, this position would generate additional transactions above and beyond what that team does on a regular basis, and those transactional revenues is what would cover this position in the long term.
Okay, so through you to Mr. Thorne, you're very confident that next year, you're not going to be coming forward to help fund this more on a permanent basis, then?
So through the chair, that's correct. We don't anticipate any additional enhancements or legal requests coming in for the real estate work. This will be covered out of the transactional costs, the transactional revenues from the deals that this position would generate.
Excuse me, just to be clear through you, Mr. Chair, talking about the revenues going forward after a six-month period of getting their feet wet, we're not talking the six months, or whatever temporary position that you're funding, that's coming out of your budget. The rest is hopefully going to come out of the revenues generated, correct?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Counselor Persuda.
Deputy Mayor Farr. A few questions, comments. So through you, Deputy Mayor Farr, to Chris Murray. Chris, so it sounds like you really believe in this position.
Through Chairman, yes.
Couple of things in here. It's a contract position for up to three years. And we get over to G, there's going to be a report on the progress and activities of the task force every six months. I know you don't have a crystal ball, many of us don't, but do you see any movement or anything happening within the first six months on this?
Yeah, I mean, I expect, in order to go into 2017, we should be, you know, earmarking where we think that revenue is going to come. I mean, it's, there'll be a lot of pressure on the team, on the individual, to, you know, to identify, you know, where that future revenue is coming from. So, you know, I have lots of confidence in John and his ability to pick someone very effective. And, I mean, I look at the things he's done in the past, so I've got faith in him being able to find the right person and get moving on this.
Okay. Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And then it says a contract position for up to three years. It's not three years, but up to. So who determines that? Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Through you, Chairman. It'll be written in such a way that whoever gets hired is going to have to perform, and that, you know, there's no guarantees. You have the keys to the car, so to speak. You can turn this thing off whenever you want, if it's not doing what it ought to be doing. Hence the reason why we're coming every six months, to demonstrate that there is certainly value to this role. And so, you know, the contract will be struck with that understanding. So, I mean, that may have some effect on who we're able to attract, but, you know, again, I think, you know, this is something we haven't done quite like this before, so it's not, it's not something that we just want to, you know, sign a deal for someone, regardless of where the money comes from, that they're here for three years. You know, the understated comment here is that, you know, they need to perform, and they need to report to you, and they need to report to us to make sure that we're making the progress that we're making.
Okay. And Mr. Deputy Mayor, so we're looking at this as an investment, and I think you've said this in different words, that it's going to pay dividends down the road. That's our hope on that. And a last thing is, John Hurtel, he's done terrific stuff here to City, the farmer's market. He's turned that around, and with our board and everything, Counselor Farr is on the board with me, Deputy Mayor Farr. He's just done great things, and I put a lot of faith in John Hurtel if we move forward with him, too. So thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. I have myself on the list, so if, who takes the chair?
Please go ahead, Counselor Farr.
All right. And I'm, just to follow up there, what the good Counselor Persuda has just mentioned. Yeah, with Hurtel behind this was, that's one of the major factors in my initial support and my continued support. And I know, you know, we're talking about the budget process. I know our revenue generation team out of Mike's, Zagarik's office are going to have some terrific things to report to us during the budget process. We're going to be all smiles. It'll be a day where I'm sure they'll receive a lot of media attention as well. Can't say much more, but, again, Hurtel has certainly, in a short time, demonstrated his ability, and being behind this particular motion now amended. I think what we're doing here is demonstrating colleagues that this council is taking land development seriously. We have over 2,000 properties. We know this. We are in a very hot real estate market. We are in the city that everybody appears to want to invest in. We're well on our way in Ward Two alone to better optimize at least one surface parking lot of 17 that we manage. And anybody who's on Planning Committee knows we've been working on this for three and a half years. How can we expedite it? How can we prioritize it? How can we pay for this particular initiative? By selling just one lot, I'll bet, and even if it were 20% below market, because it's going to bring a much, much greater positive community impact and income to the coffers from the taxes that we're going to gather versus what we're gathering now with the least optimum use. Less 20% market value, you'd pay for this one position for probably 20 years. Don't quote me on that, but Zagarik could do the math. I just didn't ask him in advance. That's just one. And that one's well on its way. We're three and a half years on this initiative. It's coming back, and I'm happy to take the funds of that very first lot of the 17 we tried to reinvigorate in our Ward Two community into a mixed-use, mixed-income community that gathers a heck of a lot more income than it does now, to put it towards this initiative and pay for this initiative. That's how serious I take this initiative. I almost wanted to further amend by saying that in the event we fail to generate enough revenue to cover the costs of this initiative, that we disband the task force, but I'll leave it where it is now. But that's how confident I feel in what's before us. So I'm going to maintain my support, and I appreciate the creativity for this amendment that's before us today. I'll take the chair back, and it looks like you, Counselor Scully.
Counselor, or sorry, Mayor Fred had indicated.
Yep, the second time. Okay, thank you.
Oh, that was an indication. Counselor Collins was indicating. I thought he was making some kind of joke. He was actually, thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you very much. Through the, through the chair, good morning, Chris. I'm just curious how much money we're talking about for this position?
I think we're looking at someone as probably pay grade level six, around there. I think we're looking at somewhere in the order of $90,000 a year, I think is in around, I think it's around that number. But, you know, at the end of the day, we will report back what exactly it is. So we're not talking a director or a, you know, a senior leader in the organization.
Thank you. That's all.
Counselor Collins?
I just want to be opposed. I'm not going to reiterate my comments at the committee. I know that it was a close vote at committee, and I know that there's been lobbying both from staff and around this table. That's the process and the environment we work in. So maybe this goes the other way, but to remain consistent, I just want to be recorded opposed.
Counselor Whit?
Can I just ask, $90,000, is that all in, benefits, all the other office space, everything else is included in that?
Yeah, no, I think $90,000 doesn't include benefits, so it probably tops the $100,000 mark. How much over that, it would be close to that, but, you know, in terms of, you know, wage or salary. But when you add the two together with benefits, I think you're right, it'd be probably just over $100,000.
And the office would have a budget as well?
No, the office is, this is the office, this individual. I mean, we're going to be utilizing John's time and the time of a whole bunch of different people throughout the organization, just little bits of their time, in a coordinated way to drive, you know, conclusions to whatever properties that we're focused on. So, you know, I don't expect that we're going to be, you know, spending other sums of money. I mean, these people are work for us already. It's just, you know, coordinating a number of people's time, but we need someone that wakes up every day that does that coordination on a day-to-day basis.
So you're saying that there's no computer, no desk, no phone?
I'm pretty sure we can find them a computer. And, you know, I have a phone. I mean, we really...
Well, Mr. Chair, I'm asking a serious question here.
And I'm dead serious as well.
And all our offices have budgets. Every office, every person, there's a signed cost to the operation of the space that they utilize. Was it called cost recovery?
Yeah.
So I'm asking a fair question in how we do business. So do we have a cost associated with that component?
No, because, again, I think, you know, unless I'm wrong, and, I mean, John, unfortunately, well, fortunately, he's on vacation, but unfortunately, he's not here, so I don't, I don't see it in a report. But, you know, again, our attitude about this is to make the best use of what we have, and that's how we're approaching it. You know, and I don't, if we have to purchase a computer for them, I think, you know, we will report back on everything that this thing is going to cost us. But Counselor, your question is a good question. I mean, it's an eyes-wide-open decision that council makes every day. And but I don't see those kinds of costs that you're concerned about being very material, and because our view is, we're going to try and make the best use of what we already have.
So I appreciate the answer. Like I said, I know that we do cost recovery, and a lot of those costs are all associated. Even when we do cost recovery on tickets and so forth, all those overhead costs are built into the cost recovery. So I think it was a fair question to ask, to understand the net-net cost of this particular position. So it could be anywhere between $100,000, $110,000, $115,000. Mr. Chair, I appreciate the answer. I just want to make sure we understood what the cost is. Often, we enter into pilots where we test the theory and determine whether or not the value that we're getting for the expenditure is there. And sometimes, that's a risk. And I appreciate, but if you don't do it, then you'll never know. So I did vote against this at GIC. It's a modest cost on an annualized basis, and I think what we're hearing around this table is, from the city manager, is that it will be moderate, and that if the revenue and the value isn't being generated, there'll be reports, and hopefully, we'll get quarter reports on the position and what it's generating. Is that correct, through the chair?
Through the chair, that is, I mean, we're obligated to come back in six months, but I want to come back quicker so you know who it is and what the financial impact has been, and so that, I appreciate the caution here, and we're going to respond accordingly to make sure you know every step of the way what this thing is doing.
Okay. I, Mr. Chair, like I said, I didn't support it at committee. I still have concerns about us not optimizing the value and staffing levels we have here currently. We do have a lot of respect for our city manager, and clearly, he feels that the capacity isn't currently there to fulfill this role within the current complement. It says in this motion that you'll be conning somebody within the organization. Does it, so this question may be asked, but obviously, that would leave a void in the responsibilities and duties of that particular position. What is the...
So we covered that. So we can, just in short, could you cover it again? He wasn't in attendance.
Sure. Yes, I mean, the, it depends on, I guess, who is applying and who gets the job, but our, clearly, it's not a goal. It's our, it's what will happen. We'll make sure that that doesn't trigger, then, a further enhancement request coming forward this year, or next year, or the year after. I mean, it's, we're going to, we'll think long and hard about who it is that we bring in, and our goal here is to not create some, you know, follow-on financial consequence as a result.
Therefore, Mr. Chair, I would, this would be one of those reluctant and support something and take the risk and chance that it will generate the revenue, so I will be supporting it. so I will be supporting it.
Maybe, Mike, uh, when revenue generation comes during the budget process, that could also be the day that they show us all the dotted i's and crossed t's on this file as direction. Councilor Marula?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Just to clarify this, what we're actually doing here, this is directly tied to revenue generation, so, through you, Mr. Chairman, so we can get back to the focus of this entire endeavor, uh, Chris, can you just elaborate on what the actual mandate of this position is, how it's self-sustaining, and what the return on investment will potentially be from a position standpoint?
Yeah, through you, Chair, I mean, there's a reason why it's under John, we do approach everything here from the standpoint of, uh, how can we bring more money into the organization? How can we better utilize assets that are just standing and not generating either tax dollars for us, uh, or generating money because we could, uh, sell or, or develop in, in other manners, so, um, that's why it's under John, um, so that's why we feel confident that going forward we'll be able to generate revenue out of this, uh, this kind of program, um, and that this position is the one that wakes up every day, um, with that in mind. Uh, how can I make more tax dollars for the city? Uh, how can I make more money for the city by, uh, the sale of land? And in other cases, just so as we don't lose it, um, we have a priority as it relates to housing, uh, and, and how to, how to do more with our assets to benefit neighborhoods, and so, uh, it won't be just strictly a hard, cold, cashed, uh, objective, it will be certainly to, you know, uh, address other challenges that we have in this community around housing and, and building worthwhile assets in our neighborhoods.
And, uh, through you, Mr. Chairman, um, Chris, would it be possible just to somehow mitigate some of the cynicism, uh, to report back on an annual basis with respect to activity and the return of our investment out that activity, and the fact that this is not a full-time FTE, but a contract on a temporary position that will be assessed, uh, at the end of the term? So, through you, Mr. Chairman, can we actually make that assessment or the conclusion of this at the end of this term as opposed to next term, so that we have full control on what the future holds on this position?
Through Chairman, we're actually going to do better than that, we're going to come every six months.
So, just to, just to basically put this in a nutshell, this is a self-sustaining position that does not have any impact on the general levy, that will actually increase revenue and mitigate challenges with the general levy, that will be assessed every six months to determine if our return of investment is actual, actually tangible, so to not support this would be irresponsible, so I support this. Thank you.
Councilor Partridge?
Um, did, uh, Councilor Collins, was he next on the list? Oh, second time, okay, thank you. Um, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and, um, I voted against this, but, uh, you know, hearing that John is going to be in the driver's seat, if I'm understanding correctly, one of my concerns was, you know, to get up to speed and, and knowledgeable about the different real estate holdings that we have, because we do, we have so many of them. What, what do we have? Um, what little bits of land or, or good chunks of land do we have that we, that, um, you know, would make some sense to, to sell off, to create the, the revenue, and, you know, there's no doubt in my mind that the more I think about this, there will be enough revenue generated, um, you know, certainly, again, as was previously said, John has proven that he will generate revenue, and I'm even more comforted to hear that there will be a report back after, every six months, if I understood that correctly. Can I just confirm that through you, Mr. Chair?
Through Chairman, yes, that's absolutely correct.
Thank you very much, and so I think, you know, that certainly gives us some comfort. It is something we can look at every six months, and then ultimately, um, you know, 2017, 2018, it's a three-year contract, if I understand correctly?
Uh, through Chairman, three-year contract, but understanding that it's dependent on the, the position being able to generate revenue, so it's not a guaranteed three-year contract.
Right, exactly, and so knowing that as well, you know, we have a jumping-off point going forward if, if it isn't going to work out, um, to prove to have the revenues generated to cover the costs, and, uh, so I'm quite, uh, I'm quite comfortable now, and I, and Chris, I appreciate your further explanation on this, thank you.
Second time, Councilor Collins. Sorry, first time, Councilor Pearson, my point.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and, um, certainly, and it's reflected in the minutes, that I did support this initially, and I will continue to support it. I think as, as has been stated, that this is not only a, a way of addressing surplus properties that are just sitting there, but it's a liability that the municipality has. Councilor Farr, you're well aware of some of our parking lots and things that aren't being used, uh, we're always challenged, and I know just in the ward, I don't have surplus properties in my ward, but, um, you know, we're challenged for staff to maintain these properties, because we have to follow property standards as residents do. So, it's a win-win all the way around, we've bantered this issue around for several years, and comments come around this table periodically, you know, we have so many pieces of property up there, we don't even have a good handle on what we have, and we need to get a grasp of that, so I will continue to support this, I think this is the right time, the market's there, um, I'm sure we'll have no problem selling some good pieces of land and, uh, be able to recoup the cost and more of the staff that's going to, to address it.
Councilor Aiden Johnson, first time.
Thanks. Very quickly, I agree with all of the arguments for this that have been produced, I'm sure the financial and revenue generation-based arguments are the best arguments, a minor additional argument that's worth noting, good community benefits of a non-financial nature will surely flow from some of the work that is performed if we pass this motion. Mr. Murray referred, when he spoke, to Shadoke Golf Course in Ward One. Certainly, best argument for looking creatively at things to do at Shadoke, argument number one, revenue generation. Argument number two, what good things for the community recreationally and culturally, green space, et cetera, might be achieved if we were to put some thought into good rational use of Shadoke and other properties, it's analogous, so it isn't just financial, I just throw that out there, thank you very much.
Oh, a very important point, well, well said, I had that point, but I failed to mention it, so you get full credit for that. Very good point, Councilor Johnson. Councilor Vanderbeek?
Thank you, just quickly, um, I, I think that this is one of those opportunities that we have to focus on something that has been sort of unfocused but in the background for a long time, and because it's focusing, um, focusing on it, I think that, that it'll, it'll move forward quickly, and it's, on top of that, it's an opportunity to optimize, uh, an oppo, an opportunity to optimize things we have for revenue generation, and it's tied to revenue generation, so it only continues if the revenue generation stays and, and proves out, so, uh, in light of that and the discussion, um, I, I too will be supporting this initiative, thanks.
Okay, second time speakers list, Councilor Collins?
And I, I really didn't want to speak a second time, but it's hard to stomach some of the comments, but I, for me, um, you know, the whole notion that this doesn't cost us anything is farcical, I mean, that's how we get into the issue and the problem of people questioning how many people work for the city, and I'll tell you what's going to happen, we're going to hire someone who most likely already works for us, they're going to leave their position in the organization, their position will be backfilled by someone who probably works for us in any year, two years, three years, individual we've hired here on contract will turn around and look at his old job and it'll be filled, and what will happen traditionally with the bureaucracy is we'll try to keep that person, and that person will invariably end up continuing to work for us, and we will have an extra budget complement, an extra FTE in the organization as a result of this contract position. I would be very interested to know how many temporary people we hired over the last five years still work for us today, when they were supposed to be here for a finite period of ti, a finite period of time, so, I, I'm, I knew where this was going to go right after it lost to the committee, I knew there was a full-court press to get this one position for 100,000 dollars, which from a budget perspective may not mean a lot to people, but these incremental increases cost us, and the money that we're paying that individual to manage this file or files is money that's not put probably into a reserve, and won't be used for a capital project, or won't be used for another initiative we have in the city, so this whole issue and the comments around the table that it doesn't cost us anything is hard to stomach, and so for me, I'll take it upon myself to work with staff and come back and maybe illustrate with some concrete examples as to where we had temporary hires that still worked for us after this argument or this rationale was used, that it doesn't cost us anything and in the long run, the bureaucracy doesn't get bigger. So, those are my comments, and I'm sorry for venting as part of my...
Second time, Councilor Marula?
See, I can appreciate where Councilor Collins is coming from, there was a time in the period at the city where that did occur, but under this new administration, I, I don't know that occurred. Chris, uh, hearing what you've heard and knowing what the history is accordingly, can we just guarantee today that what Councilor Collins has stated is not going to transpire?
Through Chairman, uh, that's what we'll be doing, uh, before, uh, the six month, I think when we make this decision on this person in this position, we'll be talking, we'll inform you specifically about the implications. To Councilor Collins' comment though about, uh, temporary people that get retained and wanting to work with, I think, I think he raises, he's raising an important point, and I know all of you know this, and so, um, I'm happy to work with Mike in terms of what is the status of, of those kinds of decisions that get made, and what is the impact of it to this organization broadly speaking, so, um, you know, there's nothing that we do that we don't want your eyes wide open, and, uh, but on this particular matter, I've given you, uh, what is my best, um, advice, that, um, you know, certainly report back what the full implications of this decision is.
And, and it would be remiss of me not to thank Councilor Collins for actually emphasizing it, because I think this is a, a process we should, uh, enshrine, to ensure that, that what used to occur doesn't occur not only now but in the future, so I look forward to those reports, I look forward to this having no impact on the general levy, but actually be a revenue generator, thank you.
Uh, second time on the amendment, Councilor Whitehead, you chimed in at exactly the same time as Councilor Skelly. Councilor Skelly and then Councilor Whitehead.
Thank you, and it's a different perspective from this side of the table, far more, uh, well-behaved. Um, I just wanted to say, uh, on, on the heels of Councilor Collins, I have a question, not having the experience of having worked here, how many people are in that department, the, the actual real estate department, that would be dealing with this? What is the staff contingent?
Through the, through the Chair, the real estate section is, I believe the total complement at the moment is 11, including all, uh, appraisers, the people who do property sales, admin support, um, I'll double-check that number, I believe the number's 11.
Thank you, and through the Chair, um, in light of the fact that this is such a hot market, um, has, has this been a priority for the city? I, I'd be surprised if it hasn't been, that we haven't been actively attempting to, to, um, to sell these, these, uh, extra properties.
So, if I can, through the Chairman, um, I think the comment was made earlier that, you know, we've been talking about a task force probably for some time, um, and, uh, I, I think the way in which properties typically end up being sold here is, is after we've, everyone in the organization, when that property that we feel, one person feels should be sold, gets circulated amongst many, many people within the organization, and, and to be honest, I mean, typically we like to hang on to things, you know, we're, we tend to be like hoarders, and when it comes to letting things go, we don't like to let things go, um, and so those lands that typically do get sold at the end of the day are the ones that have really fallen off the list and we no longer need. This task force is going to take a kind of 180-degree turn on that attitude and really kind of look at, you know, lands that, um, you know, that really we should be doing more with and kind of pushing the issue as opposed to just, you know, kind of letting property go as a, as a last resort, and, and again, because we've talked about this for so long, I think, and what you have in front of you is in part a result of our marketplace being as warm as it is right now and us getting better dollars for the lands that we own, so that's, you know, that's kind of why we're where we're at.
Thank you for that. Through the Chair, you mentioned also, Chris, that this position would also be dealing with housing, or my, did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, so through you, Chairman, again, we have over 2,000 properties, and they, they range in size, uh, and obviously located all across the, the community, um, so, you know, we want to, we know we have nonprofit housing providers that, um, that do a fantastic job of bringing on, you know, a whole range of social housing, um, you know, we may be able to incent them to do more by being able to provide them with land that they can do good things with, so we want to look at our inventory from that standpoint, um, you know, to, uh, you know, to help the Indowells and, and others that, that really have, have a wonderful track record of, of, of doing good work in this community, and so we're not just going to go ahead and do that, I mean, we're, we'll bring back these properties that we think could be utilized in this, in this way, and as mentioned, uh, you know, there's other properties that, uh, you know, uh, that just by their size and dimension are, are so small that, you know, they might make some sense to sell to an adjacent property owner, or they might make some sense to generate other positive things for the neighborhood, whether it be community gardens or whatever, um, so it's a different attitude towards our, our assets, it's looking at them more proactively, and, and as I say, you know, tax dollars, we'd love to sell land to generate good tax dollars, love to sell land to put money in our pocket, do good social housing, do good things in the neighborhood, um, you know, that's, that's our motivation, uh, as opposed to just hang on to everything and then only sell things at a last resort.
Thank you. Uh, through the Chair, one last question, and that is, having come from the private sector and, and, uh, one of the newer members of council, we, you know, you see a difference in, in the way, the complement of staff and the, between the private sector and the public sector, and, and there is always a lot of pushback from residents and constituents and taxpayers, that, uh, we are top-heavy in, in bureaucracy and, and, uh, just have an awful lot of staff, and, and it does concern me that we, we are adding, I'm wondering if we should perhaps wait and, and add this person, um, since it, you know, we've, we've gone this long, but wait until this position, wait to fill this position until we hear back on the number of part-time positions that have become full-time, that's just a, a suggestion.
Councilor Connolly, first time.
It's not related. Collins brought up, uh, a point that I hadn't thought of, and it's the, um, where the monies go when we sell them? Is it going to go into a reserve? Because I'm hearing already, oh, we can use this for parks, we can use it for recreation, we can, you know, it's going to be just a frivolous way, uh, and I would hope it goes into, or will it go into a re, reserve fund and, um, come to us for any disposal of those assets?
Very good question, Councilor, very good question.
That is a very good question, I, I think when we bring back to you the work plan, meaning simply the properties that we want to go focus on, I think in that we will be recommending to you, uh, what to do in the event that we sell and, 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 and make money. Um, I know we've talked about land banking, I know we've talked about a whole host of things, so we will give you all the options that we know we've heard from you in the past, um, and, uh, we'll provide a recommendation and you can certainly make your decision, but, uh, yeah, I mean, that, that is absolutely critical, uh, it's not, well, it won't be up to us to put the money where we think, it will be up to you to put it where you think.
Yeah, well, I hope we do put it in reserve, I mean, we all got ideas where it should go, but a few of us have talked about, uh, the housing situation in Hamilton, that would be one ideal area to put it in, it doesn't favor anybody in this city, favors, but it does favor the people, so I'd hope that'd be one of the considerations, thank you.
And, and that's such a good point, and as you know, on City Housing Hamilton, our one very vocal appellant here today has already been working months and months prior to this day on doing just that with assets that we have among the 2,000, he needs to be committed for that, I'm sure we'll have that opportunity, but it's exactly what we're speaking to, rather, but not under this umbrella of a task force which we're dealing with here today. Third time, Councilor Whitehead.
Sorry, uh, Mr. Chair, I, I think it was a great question, because we have one in the report, which, which was an asset, a citywide asset that was sold and a chunk of change went to a specific ward, and I think what we, and I made that point before, we need to have a policy, and I think this direction, where we create that reserve, we dedicate it to, uh, dealing with the infrastructure deficit of housing or whatever, I think we need to have that discussion, but we can't, I don't think anyone owns specifically an award, uh, lands that may be declared surplus, or they may be blessed with enrichment of surplus city lands, and then, uh, put a claim, and I have a lot of surplus land, so I, you know, I, I, I think I'm in a good position to say, I prefer those dollars to go into a, a reserve that this council can agree on and where it goes as opposed to being a, award-specific value, uh, because it, these are assets owned citywide, so I want to make that clear, and I hope that is captured. Um, the other point I wanted to make is, um, two years ago, I believe, and, uh, Clerks or Chris Murray may be able to correct me through the Chair, I moved a motion, uh, that there's opportunities to generate revenue in this city, uh, and, uh, and that we establish, um, a position to do so, and John Hurtel was, was hired, so, um, there are many lakes or...
So, there are many legs or arms to those opportunities that John has been working on, and I think this is just one of those arms that will generate revenue for our badly-needed infrastructure or other needs in this community. So, I wanted to make it clear that that was one of the things I reflected on. Here, I asked for this, you know, two years ago in the budget session, I asked for us to start focusing on revenue generation as opposed to just using taxes and going to the taxpayer every, every year. So, Chris, can you just comment on that?
Through you, Chairman, yeah, I, I certainly think the, over the last few years, there's, there's always been that comment from council and yourself in particular about value for money, but also, you know, making money. And so, and that's why you, you saw fit to hire John Hurtel to undertake this role, who has been to date very successful, and I think as Counselor Farr has mentioned, there will be things coming shortly to communicate even more success that he's had. So, yeah, council has made it very clear, do the most that you can with the money that you're giving staff, and then beyond that, go find other ways of making money. And I'll say this, as a result of the council's leadership and direction on this, I have other municipalities that come and visit John to know specifically what he's doing. And you would think this would be something widespread across the country in municipalities, it isn't. It, it's an area of business that is growing, and, and I would say, we're probably one of the first, you know, of a few in the country that have been, you know, looking at alternative means to, to generate revenue and, you know, so I think more and more are kind of looking at what John is doing here, and to, you know, to find creative ways to make money.
I appreciate that. So, I, I remember I was having trouble supporting a particular budget in a budget year, and I worked with staff and, and moved this particular motion that initiated this, this process. So, I'm fully supportive of looking and finding efficient ways to generate the additional revenues that we so badly need and lift that burden off the, the taxpayers of this community. So, behooves me to support, again, this particular position because it's consistent with what I've been asking for from day one.
Thank you, Counselor. Let's go full circle, Mayor Fred.
Call the question, please, and standing recorded vote.
Seconded to call the question, all in favor. And on the amendment seconded by Counselor Jackson, standing recorded vote has been asked for, all in favor.
Mayor Eisenberger, Counselors Whitehead, Skelly, Jackson, Collins, I'm, my apologies, Marula, John, Aiden Johnson, Conley, Pearson, Vanderbeek, Pasuda, Partridge, and Deputy Mayor Farr.
And opposed.
Counselor Collins. And Counselor Brenda Johnson.
Amendment carries. Now, the motion as amended, all in favor. And he opposed. Opposed is Counselor Collins and Counselor Brenda Johnson. Recorded as opposed is Counselor Collins and Counselor Brenda Johnson. Item eight on the...